Tonight, so good crowd, thank you for showing up. We'll start with call to order. Roll call. Mayor Wollin?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Orkinagin?
Here.
Hillgarth?
Here.
Coke? Pritchett?
Here.
Sheeler?
Here.
Stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation and her ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is approval of the agenda. Move to approve. Second, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Full same sign. Do you want to add the mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, yep, we're gonna add, right before that, we got 7A, we're gonna recognize the Boy Scout.
And then what about this thing here? That was in front of my...
We just got something else added?
The gentleman said he talked to you today about his cigarette license?
Yeah, that's what I talked to, but we're not doing anything with that today.
You can.
I can?
Yep, you want to put that on there?
Put that on.
Put it under mayor's report.
I can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have two changes prior to that vote. One would be 7A, to recognize the Boy Scouts, and the second is the mayor's report. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Full same sign, that motion carries, we'll go to the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Under the minutes on page nine, I believe the minutes need to be corrected. Under the foundation grant, to lead Coke and Hillgarth to recognize the city council, shall administer the Brainerd Lakes Community Foundation Grant.
Okay. Change from oversee to administer? And that was in the minutes?
It was.
Okay. And I'll quickly read the consent calendar. All matters listed are considered routine by the council, being enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown. Prior to the time, the council votes on a motion and adopt by roll call. So what I'm looking for is a motion with the changes in the minutes.
Same move.
We have motion, second. We have a second, this will be roll call. Bevins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coke? Here. Pritchett?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
We'll move to...
7A.
7A. To 7.
That's already brought up, yes, thank you. New math.
Okay. Presentations, 7A, we'll let the mayor do his first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I'd like to do is to welcome 244 and the two leaders that are here, and it's always a pleasure to see the scouts involved in the city, and all of the other things that they do to become an Eagle Scout, and I wish you all well to become an Eagle Scout. I just was able to be a part of, I think there was four individuals in our community area that achieved that prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. So I wish you all well in your completion at a goal. Okay? Thank you.
If you want to stand up real quick, we'll clap. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
7B will be Brainerd Paid On Call Firefighters Relief Association. We have President Bob Anderson, Secretary Matt Holmstrom, and Treasurer Joe Eng. Name and address, and...
My name is Joe Rubito. My address is 1305 Park Street. My rank is captain, and I've had eighteen and a half years of service on the fire department. We appreciate you allowing us to come here tonight to make a small presentation for you. We are here for the sole purpose to show respect and support for our retiring fire chief Kevin Stunick. We, as a fire department, a paid-on-call fire department, proudly serve the cities of Brainerd and Baxter, as well as the townships of Crowing, Long Lake, Maple Grove, Nokie Lake, Oaklawn, St. Matthias, and Unorganized Territory. I'd like to be the first to say that I support Chief Stunick, and I thank him for the forty years of service to his department and the community, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, council, I'm Bob Anderson. I'm paid-on-call firefighter for Brainerd Fire Department. I have eighteen-plus years of service, and I'd like to give a heartfelt thanks to Kevin Stunick for his forty-plus service, and I support the chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Battalion Chief Dave Cox, sixteen and a half years of service, and I support Brainerd Fire Chief Kevin Stunick, and I want to thank him for his leadership, his guidance, and his friendship, and everything he's done for this department. So enjoy his retirement.
Thank you.
And Captain Jeff Shaleen, been on the fire department fourteen years. I'd just like to thank Kevin Stunick for his sacrifices, his family, and him if done. Thank you, have a good retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Martin, fire captain, been on for nineteen years. I'd also like to extend a great thanks to Kevin Stunick for all the years of service he's put in for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Captain General Rebelke, been with the department twenty-three years. Just want to thank Kevin Stunick for his forty-plus years of service, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Joe Engi, paid-on-call firefighter, seven years of service. I'm not even forty years old, so thank you, Kevin. You've really been there for me, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Perry Sell, been on the fire department for twelve years. I want to show my support for Kevin Stunick and everything he's done for us, and hope that he enjoys his retirement. And I am over forty.
Thank you.
Dave Reed, Brainerd firefighter, seven years. Just want to say thanks to Kevin for all he's done for this community, for the Brainerd Fire Department, and for myself. So enjoy your retirement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Smith, twelve years, paid-on-call firefighter. Forty years is a long time, so thank you, Kevin, for everything you've done for the city and for this fire department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
LeWayne Mann, paid-on-call, ten years. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Powell, six years, paid-on-call. Thank you, Kevin, for everything and all the dedication you've given to this community.
Thank you.
Well, Langer, former fire equipment operator full-time and paid-on-call firefighter. I could not thank Kevin Stunick enough for what he's done for me. And I am one of the ones that did not sign a vote under confidence from the fire equipment operator. So thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Groenwald, five years, paid-on-call. I just want to thank the chief for his years of service. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
My name's Greg Almison, also five years, paid-on-call. Just want to say thank you to Kevin, enjoy your retirement, and you deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Cargill, two years, paid-on-call. I want to thank Kevin for his forty years of service, his dedication.
Thank you.
I'm Dennis Howard, ten years, paid-on-call firefighter, and I just want to wish Kevin thank him for forty-plus years and wish him a great retirement.
Thank you.
Joel Jacobson, paid-on-call, seven years. And I just want to thank Kevin Stunick for his service and his passion is inspiring, even after forty years, for us young guys to see that, it was great. Thanks, Kevin, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Ron Finley, paid-on-call, two years. Just want to thank Kevin for mentorship and everything we got from him.
Thank you.
Josh Myatt, paid-on-call, two years. Just thanks, Kevin, for your mentorship and guidance, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brainerd firefighter, James Norwood, and about two years on paid-on-call. And just wanted to congratulate Chief Stunick on his retirement, and thank him for his years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Holmstrom, I've been a paid-on-call firefighter since 2006. First of all, I'd like to say to retiring Chief Stunick, thank you. Thank you for being a mentor, a leader, and a great chief, and most importantly, a great friend, Kevin. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your time this evening, we really appreciate it. We had a few firefighters that could not make it, but they wanted their name said tonight. And thanks for Kevin and support of his retirement. Those members were Todd Johnson, Rick Johnson, Sam Marone, Jonathan Lemire, Darren White, Andrew Bickle, and Mark Techmeyer. Thank you again for your time this evening. Congratulations, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I have to just say... What an emotional farewell, and I really appreciate you guys coming in. Rest of the council can speak for that, but it's great that you came in, and you do a great job for the city, and thank you all.
It's really a tribute to Kevin that you all showed up en masse like this. I think that for you to take the time out of your busy schedule and to take the time to come and express that feeling, you know, for Kevin, to me, it's admirable, and I thank each and every one of you for doing that, so thank you.
If I was watching the chief right now at home, I know he's crying with tears. Enjoy. And I know how emotional he gets, but you guys really said it often, and so thank you so much for this.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That was great. Now we're gonna go to 7C, historic welcome to Brainerd banners. Parks and Rec Director Tony Saylor. Come on up, Tony. Could you top that?
I don't think anything could top that, that was great. I really thought it was wonderful. I brought my dry cleaning tonight. About a month ago, our maintenance staff was cleaning out a storage area in the Mill Avenue warming house, and we came across a treasure. We found three banners that we believe used to hang on the lampposts in Brainerd. We're trying to get some information on them. I did contact Carl Fost, who is the local historian in town. He was digging and digging and digging. First, I should show it to you. We found three of these. I did give one to Carl for the Historical Society. This one, there's a story behind it, but I'm going to present it to the city council for city hall. And then, since we found the banners, we get to keep one at the Parks Department.
Hello.
Wow.
Wow. Old timer. How would you, how long would you date that?
Well, here's what Carl kind of came up with. He talked to Bill Matthews, who was one of the first silk screeners in town, and he didn't know anything about these. Then Carl went to Charlie Karnowski of Great Plains Graphics, and he thinks it might go back to the fifties, because of the silk screening is so thick, and it was done on a huge commercial roller. Carl said that he dug around, looking at street scene photos, and except for some 1940 parades, he couldn't find any pictures of banners hanging on the streets. So what we're doing is, we're asking the public, is if, does anybody have any idea when these were hung in Brainerd?
Tony, will you hold it? Chelsea? Have you seen this banner before? How many college students have these?
Paul Bunyan, Paul Bunyan left. Anyway, I did take these down, they were kind of, kind of on the filthy side, and I took them down to Crystal Cleaners and said, can you dry clean these for us? And she goes, dry cleaning's not gonna help that. And she looked at me, single guy, figuring I know how to wreck laundry real easy. She gave me a step-by-step instruction using OxyForce and OxiClean on how to get all the stains out, and it came out pretty darn good. And then I took it back down there, and they pressed it for free. So it was very nice of them to do that. But anyway, I would like to present this to the city council, I could probably maybe take it downstairs.
Present it by Chelsea there for now.
Okay, all right. And I hope that maybe hangs nicely in the building. There is a metal rod that goes across the top that we'll put on here tomorrow or whatever. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Tony, so much. I'm gonna go back to 7B for one second. I just got a text a few minutes ago by the chief that says he's crying at home. And we knew that was coming. Okay, we're gonna go to eight council committee reports. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one is the transit system. Item 1A are the child restraint in fares, and the motion is to eliminate from 2.3, 4.1, the if-so-desired thereby on restraints, thereby requiring child safety restraints, and also to eliminate the under-five-three ride, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion, Mr. Bevins, on that? Nope. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Full same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 1B is the bid-spec approval. They are in your packet, and the motion is to approve the bid-spec as presented.
Oh, yeah, the dates are moved back one week due to, we have to get some information from the state of Minnesota. An ISO move. Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? I have one quick question. How do you advertise this for, I mean, where does it go to advertise?
The two places, we'll advertise in the dispatch, and then also in the state register.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, this motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is a request from BN Credit Union to fix their alley. The motion is to fix their alley, correct? And follow the standard practices of assessing one half of the project. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three is a request by a citizen at 624 F Street to help with sewer service issue. This is a private, it's on their own property, and the request is that, is that they hire a contractor to fix the sewer under the specific circumstances which you've read, and that we assess them, and we pay for it, and we assess them back over the course of five years, not ten, with interest. And I move to approve.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second.
Is this common, do we do this?
If I can, Mr. President, we get about one of these a year. It's very common with Brainerd Public Utilities, they've got a separate program for water service replacement. And about two or three years ago, the council started entertaining these hardship requests, and we've been getting about one a year since then.
Okay. Especially where there's surprises like this for somebody to just purchase something.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, aren't there laws about disclosure when someone is selling a house? According to the letter from this property owner, she found out that the sewer needed to be replaced upon moving in. So the previous, or the original owner must have known that. And isn't there a law about disclosure when you sell property?
According to this, though, she already went to court, and already got that all discovered.
It just doesn't make sense that, that her attorney fees would exceed what she would recover. I wonder if she asked for attorney fees?
Yeah, and that would be the legal end of things. Go ahead, Jeff.
If I can, Mr. President, I think at the time, too, she may not have realized that it was gonna involve a lift station. She thought, maybe thought she could have separated it out into the connection of gravity.
Any further, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Full same sign, that motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you. Item number four, the motion is to move to approve the request for engineering for $3,000, not $3,300, for the additional AutoCAD software and training to come from the construction fund, an ISO move.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? I have a quick question. Jeff, it just be to you, why isn't it user-friendly? Or why is it, you know, reading this, it sounds like it's a system that's not very user-friendly? And why, I mean, is there something?
It's not very user-friendly, but it's, there's only this and microstation. Those are the only two programs out there, and microstation's even less user-friendly.
Okay. And how many people will be trained?
Two engineering technicians, and then Jesse will be sitting in on that also.
So he's aware of what's going on. Three people trained for this $3,000? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Full same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, the moment you've all been waiting for. We have a motion on the business 371 reconstruction. Did you want to open the, I mean, I think we've discussed it enough, but you asked.
That'll be up to you, because I think we have discussed this, and you are coming up. You do have a motion out of there.
We did have, after an open discussion in Safety and Public Works Committee, I am ready to make the motion. The motion is to recommend to MINDOT to reduce business 371 from the southern end of the project northward up to about Oak Street to three lanes, and to continue northward to Washington with the existing five lanes, an ISO move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion by the council? And I know there'll be some clarification, so Mr. Bevins can...
Yep, I will gladly give clarification, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I'll try and be brief, because I'm gonna try and condense two years' worth of comments. I think there was a lot of, a lot of consideration given, given towards trying to balance the benefits of reducing the lanes and thereby minimizing the amount of property taken, particularly in the southern portion of the project, also being able to maintain the amount of traffic flow needed to continue to allow our businesses to thrive. This seemed to be a fair trade-off, although maybe not a perfect solution to all, to all arguments. But the thought process was, if we think of the outside lanes on the five-lane portion as continuous turn lanes, and if we chose to reduce that portion to anything less than five lanes, that we would struggle with being able to continue to maintain a through-traffic lane for those people that are trying to move commerce through the city of Brainerd, and that that was necessary. We could reduce it to a three-lane project with a center lane and turn lanes, but practicality says then that we would just have extremely long extended right-turn lanes, which is what we have now. So this seemed to be the best compromise that we would come up with, and we wanted to have a motion that we could argue and vote on, up or down, however you want to do it. And this seemed to be a, a good compromise, as well as reducing the possibility of the city of Brainerd's financial exposure for right-of-way, as well as giving MINDOT an opportunity to try and come up with some sort of ADA compliance for our sidewalks. So that's the, that's the short version of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First of all, I want to thank the committee for, you know, listening to everybody, and we had lots and lots, lots of meetings on this, and we've really hammered this out. From the business world, this is not the solution, and from the people that are, you know, on the residential side, I'm sure they're not, you know, it's not their solution either, but we got a compromise and try to find a compromise. The business world here has definitely, you know, rang out a lot, Javi Felton, there's a lot of people in the crowd in from the other side, so... I'm happy to hear that there's something that's coming out of it at least, and... But anybody from...
Yes, I have some questions.
Yes, go ahead, man.
I'm presuming that Mr. Hallgren may have to answer these. I want to be certain, first of all, that I understood the motion. From Oak Street South, you are proposing three lanes. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And from Oak Street North, five lanes as exist?
Yes.
There are existing sidewalks on the area from Oak Street North also, and I would need to, clarification from Mr. Hallgren, if those sidewalks would then have to be replaced to meet ADA requirements?
Yes.
Yes, you are correct. All existing sidewalk would need to be replaced as part of this project and be fully compliant with ADA.
But you won't have that much, explain to me then, I'm missing something. If you leave the roadway as is going north, how will you have room to replace the existing sidewalks to meet those requirements? I don't understand that.
That's gonna be challenging for us. We are gonna have to reduce the lane widths through that area where we have the five lanes, from twelve-foot lanes and a thirteen-foot center-left turn lane to probably eleven-foot driving lanes and a twelve-foot center-left turning lane, basically buying us about two and a half feet on either side of the sidewalks. We're also gonna have to play with the curb height from the six-inch standard to four-inch, and then from there, we're gonna have to do our best to squeeze everything in to be fully compliant. It's not gonna be an easy fix, it's gonna be challenging for us. So we will, the devil's gonna be in the details, and as we get into that, we're gonna be challenged with...
Will there be any property going north from Oak Street that you would have to take something from?
There could be some chance of that, especially when we're crossing the driveways to blend the driveways in smoothly. We may want to go back farther on those driveways so we can do a better job of blending in, so to speak, so they're not, so they're not steep or doesn't have the appearance of a bump. There could be situations like that.
And then the cost of the new project, how does that align with your proposal on the three lane?
We have not analyzed this as an alternative for a cost estimate. It will be something that we will need to look at and have that continuing discussion with the city and with, with the city engineer.
Would you anticipate it would cost more or less?
Being that it's wider, more surfacing, I would assume that it would be more, more, a little bit more costly. More costly than the three-lane alternative, put it that way.
And then, perhaps I'm asking this question prematurely, but would MINDOT bear the cost?
We are gonna have cost participation with the project, with the city. We haven't fully fleshed out what that cost participation will be. With this alternative, I think the majority of the costs with this proposal would be MINDOT's. I'm assuming at this point, but I will have to verify that with our cost participation policy.
Does it seem likely to you that you can reduce the lane only to eleven feet and still do what you want, or what's being proposed, north of Oak?
I think in concept, yes. I think in concept it will work. Of course, there's always trade-offs, but in concept, yes, I think we can make it fit.
I have one question, you're still here. When I sat with you, you've said everything north of Norwood. You did not think there would be any acquisitions and you could fit the five lanes in?
Correct, correct. When we're, when we're face, building face, building face, that's gonna be a hard constraint for us.
But I just want to clarify, you did mention that would be, and that's the area that she had concerns of. Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead, Gabe.
So kind of to piggyback on that, about Oak Street means we're Norwood, Oak, in that area.
Kelly? Chair? Yes, go ahead, Bevins.
Thank you, Gabe, that's very perceptive of you. I didn't specifically want to say like the middle of Oak Street. To give MINDOT, the part that's interesting now is, we give MINDOT direction as to what we feel is an acceptable compromise. Now they, now they have something to work with. It might be, and we don't know exactly where that will transition. We have to give a little faith to the engineers, and also understand that they're gonna bring us back a set of plans that we'll prove. Okay? So just like with Wayne Lane width, the next item on here, there is no recommendation, because I have a little faith that Mr. Hallgren and the MINDOT engineers will come back. The only recommendation is to make them as wide as possible and still fit within the buildings. But I have to give him... But I have to give him, and you heard, an idea, but I imagine he'll have to go put, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but am I explaining this correctly?
You're doing a very good job.
Yeah, I didn't want it to say, I mean, if it comes out that it works out, that it's a half-block south of Oak or a half-block north of Oak, I didn't want to, I didn't want to, it's a concept, we're trying to give direction, so he can come up with a more specific plan, and then also tell us how much our participation costs. But we want to end the discussion tonight or as soon as possible to give him what the concept's going to look like, and hopefully, we're going to do that.
My question will be, when do you think you'll come back, just for everybody's contentment here, with the layout that we're kind of proposing?
I think I would like to get it in front of, the council has a concept level to make sure that we heard you correctly and present that to you. I think if we could get between two weeks and a month, I think that would be adequate time to get us a concept on paper for, basically for you to look at and verify that that is the direction that you have given us.
Yes, and you also know that any time you can come to the council with any hiccups you have and say, you know, I've got a hiccup here and I need a new direction.
Absolutely, that is, thank you for the flexibility.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
With that, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to reiterate it, Item 7B, there is no direction to Mindot beyond, we'd like to keep those lanes as wide as possible, and I think they understand that, and that will become part of the design process as we move forward, to see what actually fits. Item 6 is organized garbage collection. At this point, this is an FYI. I want to just refresh your memory, we had a couple of issues where some citizens were complaining, particularly about those two-wheeled carts sitting down at the end of driveways or even out in the roadway, sometimes for days or even longer. As part of that, we, our committee decided to take on the discussion of whether the city of Brainerd could benefit from organized, from considering organized garbage collection. And what that would be, would be to try and reduce the amount of truck traffic and the number of vehicles on our streets, wearing tear on the streets, and also driving our citizens crazy. We had a lot of, some comments from the garbage collectors, and at this point, it's an FYI as to where we go from here, because the committee's going to take it back up in two weeks as to whether we want to move forward in discussing this or not. And the last item is item number seven, and it is an additional item, you may have gotten a sheet that looks like this, it is a request from the engineering department to allow the hiring of temporary employees this summer for the engineering department at $11 per hour. We had budgeted between 10 and 12, up to how many employees, Mr. Engineer?
This would be the street department for two.
Street department for two at $11 an hour, and I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this? Some of you guys are still scrambling, they got a copy done.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't have a copy, but that's what you did.
You want to take a peek at it there before?
Yep, I apologize.
All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
End of report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins, that was quite rapid.
Yep.
Well, we're going to move to 8B, and this will be the Personnel and Finance Committee, and Chair Mary will take it off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number one is the approval of bills, transfer of funds, and there were no payments to contractors. So they made motions to approve bills and to approve the transfer of funds, which are defined on the front page of your agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number two is the legal Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust liability coverage or waiver. If we decide that we wish to waive the statutory limits, then we might, would be liable for any additional costs that we might have to bear as a result of a lawsuit. So the motion is that we do not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability as established by Minnesota statutes 466.04, and we authorize proper signature of the form, and tort means a lawsuit, Mr. Chairman. Now, a civil lawsuit liability is what we're talking about, and that's a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, thanks for that explanation, because I did not know what T O R T stood for.
It's not a cake, it's not a little pie, it's neither one.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item three is the Parks and Recreation Roof Insulation Quotes. You had asked for the actual quotes, and I believe they were handed out tonight. And the motion from committee is that we accept the low quote from Minnesota Spray Foam Insulation for the, in the amount of $25,986. That's a motion.
We have a motion.
What, a second?
We have a second, any further discussion? Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just need my memory refreshed regarding what we had budgeted for this.
We budgeted $50,000, and we have a second motion coming up if this one is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Go ahead, Mary.
And the second part of the motion is that the remainder of the money, which would be about $24,000, would then go into our capital fund. Currently, you know, by budget, we have $100,000 in the capital fund, and with this, we'll have about $124,000. And again, to refresh your memory, we're looking at a new telephone system, which we've been estimating at about $30,000, but so far, no quotes have been received. And the second priority was a generator for the police department, where some preliminary investigation had indicated that it was greater than anticipated. With this additional money, we may be able to take another look at that, so.
Are you going to put that on your committee?
Yes, yes, it is. But I think I'd like to make the motion that the additional or leftover money go into the capital fund.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
I'm going to skip to number five, and that is discussion of the May 12 Personnel and Finance Committee Workshop. All of you, I believe, received a memo from our finance director, Connie. At the beginning of the year, we had talked about another format for financial reporting on a regular basis, and came up with what you have or hopefully looked at tonight. Committee thought it was quite good, it gives you the revenues in, the budgeted amounts and the revenues that have come in to date, as well as the expenditures for the major departments. There may be a little tweaking that you will want done, and we'll be talking further about that at the May 12 workshop. Additionally, at our May 12 workshop, we will be talking about our salary administration plan. So if anyone, it's a big lengthy document, you probably have it, if not, secret shoot. And if you'd like to review it and give us any suggestions or any other suggestions for that workshop, we'd like to hear that. So that is informational only, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, and then moving back to.
Can I ask one question?
Please, please.
Who should the contact for that information?
I would suggest, probably Patrick.
Every council member did receive that just recently, that big three-ring binder.
Yep, okay, thank you, just make sure that the emails went in the right direction.
There you go, I'll take them.
Okay, got it? Okay. Item four, motion to accept the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation Grant Award in the amount of $33,000, and there is a recommended resolution, and I move the resolution.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion, and this is a resolution, so it'll be roll call, but go ahead, Mr. Bevins.
Just to clarify the motion, we are accepting the grant and this resolution that was presented by the foundation.
That's right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Gabe.
Yeah, well, we, in committee, voted to accept this grant, then we had further discussion and tried to get a motion to talk further about how the grant will be administered, and we didn't really get anywhere with that, so I just want to make sure we have that discussion here.
I just wanted to clarify.
But, yeah, we did vote on passing this resolution to.
So there's going to be further discussion after this motion or about the rest of it? Okay, that helps a lot. So with that, go ahead, Chip, you might as well ask it now.
I'm just trying to clarify what's happening.
The motion, go ahead.
It's just accepting or adopting the resolution.
Adopting the resolution to accept the $33,000.
Okay.
Just that.
Could I add in there with great appreciation?
Yes.
Why not? Okay.
You agree?
Sure, of course.
We have a motion, we have a second, we'll do a roll call, being a resolution.
Bevins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yes.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Second part of that, Mary?
The second part was, there were various memos included, one from our planner, Mark Osgarden, in which he tells us, does not ask us, but tells us that he plans to ask the park board to take over the administration. The second one was from me, and in trying to think of what seemed to me to be a reasonable way to administer the grant and a suggested format. However, in committee, my peers, my colleagues, wanted to have a motion to rescind last meeting's motion and substitute something to the effect of the HRA taking it over, which seemed to me was contrary to what we did. And so we were not able to come to any agreement, mainly because of the uncertainty of the format for doing that. So that, we've referred that to our attorney, and I think all we're looking for is legal guidance, if we have members who want to do it, how they would do it.
Excuse me, I think it would take a motion to rescind the motion from the last council meeting, and then a new motion on the terms of what you discussed. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't fully know that, but based on what I've heard about it beforehand, and my quick review here of the Sturges rules, I think the appropriate procedure would be a motion to rescind.
I move to rescind the council's actions from April 6 regarding the administration of the grant.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Can I have that motion read to us? Do we have the minutes here, Connie? Just to make sure that I know what we're rescinding just.
Actually, let me do that, sir.
Okay.
That's included in your packet that Mary just had you modify.
Okay.
Now I've got to find that section you just modified. Page nine of that, of that minutes, and she just. Yeah. I can read it here.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, it was under unfinished business, page nine, top of page nine, Brainerd Lakes Community Foundation Grant Administration, request for council direction, council to oversee Riverwalk Grant Administration approved. Moved and second by Alderman, Coe, and Hillgarth to recognize that the city council shall administer the Brainerd Lakes Community Foundation Grant Administration.
Okay. Got it. So, any further discussion on the reset? We have a motion? Oh, go ahead, Mary.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out, the resolution we just adopted also says that we accept the responsibility to administer the grant. So we're rescinding something that we've already, again, we did it two weeks ago, and now again tonight we just adopted. It's what it says, if you look at the resolution we just adopted, in the next to the last paragraph, be it resolved, the city of Brainerd has adopted and will accept the responsibility to administer the grant. Exactly what it says. I see no point in rescinding it. Perhaps the makers secondary of the motion want to speak further to it, but they're, what they want to see happen, and I'm not, they want, again, the H.
Let me go ahead, Gabe, let him jump in.
Please, please.
Yeah, so we, we didn't even try to rescind the motion, we didn't think it was necessary. Last time, we said the city council would oversee the grant, we still feel the city council should oversee the grant, we think city council should have the final say on any city projects, but we want the HRA to do the hiring and the committee work and all of that involved with the grant administration, with council oversight. If the HRA so wants to, we don't even know if they would take it. So, after discussing with the attorney, he thinks it would be appropriate to rescind the motion and then pass a new one, as opposed to just further clarifying a previous motion. I, I don't know.
Mr. Bevins?
I understand, I think, what Gabe's saying completely, is we're going to rescind what we've done, which was kind of an all-encompassing umbrella, and then we're going to separate the acceptance of the grant and the money with the actual implementation of the project.
Yep.
And so we're going to separate those two things.
Right.
With subsequent motions, is the plan.
Yep.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that, I don't know who it makes sense to, but we have just adopted the resolution here that we will, in fact, administer. So I suppose you can twivel over the word administer, but generally, if you administer something, you're responsible for it, and you take care of how the goals and objectives are carried out. That's what administer would seem to me to mean, and I think that is what it means. I don't know why there is this, let's be honest, this desperate attempt to keep the council away from actually doing this hiring and subsequently appointing a committee. They want the HRA to appoint the committee, the HRA to do the hiring, but in the final analysis, the city must be responsible for any legal work, for any permitting that would need to be done, for any, if there was some other fiduciary responsibility that had to be approved, the city would have to do it. The city is responsible for the ethical leadership, and if we fritter it away, then truthfulness, transparency, and integrity are absolutely lost. The Brainerd council, any council, with all its faults, we're transparent, we're sitting here with the TV on us, the reporter writing down what we say. That doesn't happen with the HRA. When's the last time you read a big report from the HRA or the Park Department?
The rhetorical?
Yes, it is.
Do you understand?
But it's also important. I'm dismayed at the cavalier attitude that I'm seeing on something of this magnitude in our city.
The mayor has one, go ahead, Mary.
And I must have missed the, maybe the second part?
You want to come up to the mic?
I can do that. But to me, the motion was to accept the $33,000, but was there a part in there further pertaining to the additional the city except, or doing it? I missed something in there.
Do you have, you have the resolution in front of you, that we adopted again tonight?
Read this part right.
Just read it.
Any other discussion by anybody else here, real quick while we're reading it? You got some, Chip? Go ahead.
Not totally understanding all the protocol rules. I think we're complicating something that really doesn't need to be that complicated. I believe, as I understand it anyway, that the grantor's concern is that the city council get involved with micro-managing the process, and that there could be some people on the city council who, or. for one reason or another may not want to see the process come to fruition, be effective. And so they're some hesitant, as I understand it, from the grantor to give the city council the money and have all of us micro-managing the details when we have a whole city to run. This is just a small part of that. And it was suggested that HRA is well positioned to be the administrator, or the peer, if you will, of hiring this person fulfilling the wishes that the grantor has put in their, that we put in the request for the grant, that they put in their answer to us.
Go ahead.
I just.
Thanks, Chip.
I'm a little puzzled that that wasn't in the terms of the grant then, that they were going to stipulate how we administered it. That's not what was in this this resolution that we just adopted. And I don't know what, why we have to rescind the motion. If you want to bring a motion forward that says that some other entity be considered, then maybe we could just do that, and it would be a lot less inflammatory. Because clearly, we just adopted a resolution that reiterates what we did two weeks ago, and that is that we accepted the grant and that we'd administer it. I don't see terms that say that they're concerned about how we administer the grant in this resolution. And I think that having a conversation about how it happens going forward is good, but I'm not necessarily in favor of parcelling it out to one department or another. The city planner applied for the grant. I think he needs some accountability for it, in all honesty, because he was the one who sawed it out.
Go ahead, Gabe.
And I just want to say one further thing about the last thing we voted on, the resolution we passed. It adopted the goals and objectives of the grant application, that in the goals and objectives state that the city has limitations to facilitate this grant. So we just acknowledged that there are limitations within the city, and it should be facilitated by somebody else. So just to clarify that. The goals and objectives.
The ability of the city of Brainerd is to facilitate is limited due to the time that would be needed for the process. Let's say it, Mary.
So you can read one sentence or another sentence, and ultimately, we're just trying to get this to be administered the best way possible.
If I may?
Go ahead, Mayor.
My poor little mind missed onto the first stuff, and what I heard was that the city accepted the $33,000 grant. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch the other verbiage before that. But that's the part that my little mind heard, and that's what I was thinking it was, was just accepting the $33,000 grant. My apologies for not having that heard right in my little mind.
Chip, one more time. Go ahead.
I think possibly what kind of facilitated this further gnashing of teeth was council member Coe's proposal that could be interpreted that we just throw out the past two years' worth of work of thirty-some people and just start all over again with a new committee and new committee members. And that that just isn't working for me.
Okay. Well, we have a motion, we have a second, and I'm going to just ask for a roll call, because it really looks like it's.
Rescind the motion.
Pardon me?
Rescind the motion one more time.
That's what I asked. Rescind the motion, just so we all know what we're voting on.
And?
To rescind the action taken on April 6 regarding the administration of the grant. Not the acceptance, the administration. Now, I have a, just a question.
Go ahead, Gabe.
Sue brought up something interesting, and that would probably go to the attorney. Could we just simply, you know, and Kelly kind of touched on this too, we're separating the two motions. Can we accept the resolution and then just make another motion saying this is how we want to go forward? Rather than the rescinding?
And maybe I'm not clear on what the subsequent motion would be.
Welcome to this committee.
Because in, my understanding was, two weeks ago, we passed a motion, the council passed a motion to administer the grant. Essentially, the discussion was whether we should hand it off to HRA or keep it with the city. Now, as I understand it, you may want to, you've accepted the grant, but you may want to... Well, that's what I don't understand. What would be the?
The advantage of what we're doing?
Not necessarily the advantage. I'm not clear on what the follow-up motion would.
Looking at working with HRA to hire the required staff and to bring their proposal back to the city council.
But still having the city retain ultimate administration responsibilities?
Yeah, I think that would be under the resolution.
Because that, to me, would be would be an amendment to the previous action, which could just be done with a motion.
Just amend.
As opposed to it being the opposite of what we did.
Okay, and that would probably be cleaner and simpler, right?
So that makes sense.
And, Mr. Chair, ultimately, all we're doing, if this passes, is that we're just going to have a conversation with HRA and see what their expectations would be on what they would even accept anyway.
So I could withdraw my motion to rescind?
Yes.
And I would withdraw my second?
Make a motion to amend.
And second?
And so my amendment would be to work with the HRA to hire the required staff with the grant and bring their proposal back to the city council.
That's legal.
Can you amend something that was done two weeks ago?
It's an amendment motion. It's a motion on its own, though, this, right now.
With the clarification there, we have a motion, we have a second. A motion. Can be repeated one more time by Dave.
So the motion is basically, okay, we're accepting the grant, right? Working with the HRA to hire the required staff and to bring their proposal back to the city council.
Sue?
Just to clarify. Clarify what they're going to bring back and at what point.
Whom they're suggesting, you know, they're going to do the process.
The hiring process.
And so they're going to say, this is our suggestion.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, that's what I think. We come back with a proposal of how they would facilitate if they would.
Beat this subject quite a bit, so go ahead, Mary.
No, I have a question too. This is very important. I want the clarification. If your suggestion, and the motion will say, that they come back with their suggested process to the council. Mike and I'll be just as blunt as Chip was. My fear is that there is already someone waiting in the wings who anticipated being hired without any qualifications whatsoever, and that there are maybe people on the council who'd like to facilitate that. That is absolutely contrary to how a public body ought to. That is nothing more than mushroom management, where you grow, kind of.
But before, yeah, I have to stop before you get into positions, but I appreciate that.
I do intend to go on. I want clarification on what the wording is.
Yeah. We have to move on here before we start throwing a lot of mud.
This is very important.
Yeah, and it is, and I'm going to ask for a roll call. So we got a motion?
Wait, I don't know what the motion is. That's what I'm asking.
That'll be the third time, Mr. Richard, but go ahead.
Work with the HRA to hire the required staff to bring their proposal back to the city council.
We have a motion, we have a second. Go ahead with the roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Oregon Hagan?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes. That motion carries. Are you finished with that topic?
Then we are finished, and we are done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to unfinished business. 9A. HRA Board Request to Authorize Increasing the Brainerd Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board to Seven Members Effective July 1, 2015. This will be a voice vote. Come on up, Jennifer. Thank you so much. I was glad to see you here.
Welcome back, you guys.
Thank you. Jennifer Bergman, I'm the executive director of the Brainerd HRA. Excuse me. Before you, as an item, we were here before you in January with a request to increase the HRA board from six to seven members. At the January meeting, our position was that, you know, we're a little uncomfortable with an odd number. If we were to ever have a tie vote.
You mean an even number?
An even number. That one. An even number. We wanted an odd number.
New math, even odd.
Yes, but we were concerned that if we ever had a tie vote, what would we do? At that meeting, as you recall, is the time when you were considering the interpretation of the charter and the BPU board not being, members of the BPU board not being able to participate or be on another board or commission. So at that time, we had a discussion here and said, well, let's table it for now. Then with Ray Burnett's passing, we are down to five members. And then the board thought, well, let's take a look at this and think about, you know, kind of what we see and what we think we should have as a board. And after a couple of months, I think the HRA board has decided that it really would be good for us to go to seven members. We've increased a lot, added some additional duties, and we think that having more participation on our board would be better than having less participation on our board. So we're recommending to the council that you increase the board from six to seven members effective July 1. The reason July 1 is because our terms end on June 6, so that would give us time, or the council time, to advertise for those positions. HRAs are governed under Minnesota state statutes, and the mayor appoints and the council confirms all positions at the HRA board. So with that, Mr. President, I would turn it to you, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
I will entertain a motion in a second, and we're going to have some discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Ben.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request for authorization to increase the Brainerd Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board to seven members effective July 1, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion on this topic? All in favor of the motion? Signify by aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And under time, too.
Yes. 9B, this is a public hearing. And so, let's see, we'll open up the public hearing at 8:37. And at this moment, this will be the public hearing, and it's going to be for the improvement 1306 28th Street Construction. This will be adoption of a resolution. Anybody here for the 28th Street Construction project? Come on up.
There are two microphones, one on your side.
Yeah, you get to take your turn.
Thank you.
Let's start out with state your name and address, and then go ahead with your questions, and direct them right at the council.
My name is Tim Quintana. I'm at 265 28th Street.
Could you spell your last name? I missed that.
Yes, Q like Quebec, U-I-N-T-A-N-A.
Thank you so much, Kim.
And I'm a landowner on 28th Street.
Yes.
Here to discuss the assessment that y'all want to put on the landowners for the improvement to the street. Now, I, for one, don't care if you do anything with it. It's not in good shape. I believe there are eight homeowners and four businesses on that street. We know how to navigate the street. We know how to get around the holes. We don't need it to turn into an interstate. It's already used by way too many vehicles. I spoke to the engineer today, and he told me that two years ago, they did a survey of traffic on that street, and there were 1,600 cars per day that go along that section. 1,600 cars out of 12 dwellings. And that's, if you improve it, it's going to at least go up by 50% minimum. And now, if it's going to go through anyway, and I think it's going to get ramrodded through anyway, I think it's quite unfair that the small amount of residents that are on that street get charged 50% of the cost when they're going to use a miniscule amount of that road per day. It just is not fair. And with that, I'm done.
No, no, you can keep talking, Tim. I just have a question for you when you get caught up.
Okay, please.
My question is, we had lots and lots and lots of meetings, and I was in Oaklawn Township with meetings and with the city, and then you've been invited to meetings. This is the first time, and I don't like the word ramrod, because we have spent.
I apologize.
We spent a considerable amount of time wanting to hear what you just said, but you never said a word until tonight.
I was actually here two years ago. I was not able to attend last year. I apologize. But it was a smaller committee meeting. It wasn't in this main hall, but I have been at meetings, sir.
Because most of the people on that route were in favor of doing something with that in the committee meetings and everything else, until, you know, to get it to this point. But I want you just to be clear on the ramrodding, because I didn't like that.
I apologize for my verbiage, that get excited.
No, I know, and we appreciate that, Tim. Anything else you want to add, always, though?
Thank you.
And I think, one quick question, your fee's worth $3,822. Is that what I read?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else? Please come on up. Thanks, Kim, too.
I'm Lori Millam, 345 28th Street. I've probably been at, I think, every meeting that I've been notified about doing this road. We were some of the first ones to bring this street to attention because of the amount of traffic there. It definitely needs repair. Going down that street, down in what is, we call the swamp area in the north end, it is horrible. We came down there tonight, and the potholes and the road is just unbelievable there. A lot of our concern was also the amount of what we call foot traffic on that street, since they developed the area south of Oak Street. The traffic has increased so much. And apparently, there, down there, there are a lot of people who do not have vehicles, because we see so many people walking that road. Going up to Cub Food, we see them coming back with bicycles with grocery bags, wagons with little kids in, carrying grocery bags. We're concerned, and they do this even after dark, we're concerned about the people getting hit, and we have brought that up several times. That's what we asked for a sidewalk. We didn't ask for another driving thing, but I think Jeff brought that up with why they had their reasons for doing that. I'm a little concerned that right now, well, this has been put off for two years, and we all know part of the reason was is that one of the people, one of the places on there did not want to pay their assessments and wanted the township to do it, and that delayed things quite a bit. I've been at a lot of meetings with that, too. But each time this comes up, the first meetings we were at was a small meeting that we had up, one of the meeting rooms here at the City Hall, where we met with Jeff and Jesse, and he presented things. At that time, our costs were almost $2,000 less than they are now. The longer this gets put off, the higher the cost each property owner is going, and that's understandable. Construction costs, I'm sure, have gone up. Again, I'm concerned because, again, it says an estimated assessment. I have a question, if there have been bids put out on this, is there a?
You can direct them here, but no, there's a bit.
Nothing.
Tonight, we're going to, you know.
So estimated, again, could change the total to each property owner?
Up or down?
Up or down? Well, we both know that things are probably never going to go down.
Well, we got a pretty good engineer, that's all.
We try to be conservative in our estimates.
Right, and also, the one thing that we brought up at one of our small meetings was that if, when they put the bids out, if they would let the companies doing the bids contact each property owner to see if they were interested in having their driveways tarred at the same time, and if that could bring their bids down. And, you know, some people would be interested in doing that. Not everybody, of course. We were told it was going to be done last summer, then all the delays were over who was going to pay for this one part of the assessment, delayed it again. Then we were told that it would happen in June. Now, that work would start in June. Now, if bids haven't even been let out, how much longer is this going to go again?
And right after this, we can, you know, answer some of those questions, and it'll be part of the motion, and...
All right. The other, the other thing that I see and hear is, it says grading, storm sewer, curb gutters, aggregate base, bituminous surfacing, and an eight-foot, eight-foot bituminous trail, which started out to be a sidewalk away from the street. Storm sewer is the word that we do not have, we did not have sewer and water put in there. How are we going to have storm sewers if there's not sewer lines there? Jeff, is that a question for you?
They all need to be directed to the city council, and the council decides who would answer that.
Okay.
Yes, and I can have Jeff go ahead real quick on this. I'm trying to, you know, just pile up the questions, so he's not just taking one at a time, just kind of give him a bunch of questions, and then he can address them. But go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, the, on the storm sewer, that's independent from water and sewer, so you're right, we're not planning to extend water and sewer. The, the storm sewer, since we are talking an urban roadway, it's going to have curb and gutter. At the low point where the road's really bad, we're going to have to put in some catch basins there, and within a platted street right-of-way, we're going to construct some stormwater ponds or management facilities. So that is something that is not being assessed. We are using our storm utility, storm sewer utility, to pay for the storm sewer costs.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. So if you are, you are talking about, if you approve this tonight, how soon will you let out the bids, and how soon would this work? If bids aren't even out, we're concerned, is it going to even happen this year, and then what will happen to our assessments again?
It was in here, and I read it, and I was going to follow up on it, but the bids are going to be let out here shortly, right after we do this, and then, well, go ahead, Jeff, you can go with the timeline.
But Ken, the action we'd be asking the council to do tonight would be to order in the improvement, to approve our plans and specifications, and authorize the advertisement for bids. With that, we would start bidding next Friday. We're required to bid for three weeks, so we would have bids back and tabulated and referred to the city council absolutely no later than June 1st. So usually takes about a week to 10-day turnaround for bonds and insurance certificates to get in, so we would expect work to begin by mid-June.
By mid-June?
Yep.
Will you be contacting us again after the bids are let out, so we have another assessment, or will there be another meeting for the residents on that street?
After it's done, after it's done, or the cost, sorry.
I want to clarify why the delay. This would have went out in February. MINDOT, we were proposing to put a right-turn lane off of Highway 25 onto 28th Street. MINDOT, you know, did not want to, you know, pay for that, so then the city applied for a grant. We just got notified recently that that grant got denied. Otherwise, this whole project would have took off, but for safety reasons, we were trying to get a right-turn lane off of Highway 25 onto, you know, onto 28th Street, and that got denied with the grant, and got denied by MINDOT. So that project, that was the part that slowed this thing up for the timeframe. Go ahead.
And that was going to be my next question. We almost saw another bad accident at the north end of 28th Street, and I was, I said at the time to my husband, I certainly hope they get that clarified up there because it's, it's a bad intersection at the north end.
Yeah, it's disheartening to find out that we didn't get the grant, so...
But nothing will change?
No, we don't, we don't have the funding, and as you can hear, nobody wants to pay for that either.
Okay. At this point, I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being at every meeting.
Thank you.
You were at every meeting.
I was.
Come on up.
Chuck Jacoby, 305 East 28th Street. Been there for 29 years, and yes, I have missed all the meetings except for this one, but my neighbor, Tim, has represented me, as I was either working or out of town for those. Not your fault, my fault. Two questions I have. Number one, at the low end there on the north side, where we're talking about where the swampy area is, when we put in that storm sewer and ponds, as what was, something was mentioned, how is that going to affect the wetlands on either side? Will they be seeping into the storm sewer and be pumping away and eventually drained? Is that something that's been foreseen, looked at, studied? That was one question I have. The other question I have is regarding, and I lost it. Storm sewer, there, okay. Oh, once the street is in, assuming, and no water and sewer is put in, what's the anticipation of the cost to the homeowners and businesses on the street to tear it all up again to put water and sewer in, and when?
I can answer number two. Number two is, I think there is enough room on outside of the street to have the sewer and water put in, and still the right-of-way, because you guys got deep right-of-ways in that area. So if, and Jeff can help me out, but the sewer and water can be placed without tearing the street up, and that was the only reason why I would allow this myself with a vote to go forward, for the same reason that you're saying.
Thank you.
And then, question number one, I'm going to let the storm sewer part, Jeff handle.
Okay, yes, on, actually, it won't have any impact on the wetlands. Right now, it's the low point, so water's draining on the road to that low point, and then going off into the wetlands. Instead of it just running down the road, we're actually going to run it down a curb line into catch basins, and then run it through a pond system before we discharge into the wetlands. So the water that goes there now is going to continue to go, go there.
Okay, so it's not going to be lower than the wetlands and absorbing some of that?
No.
All right. Then, the only personal request that I have, as, if the vote goes forward when you resurface, is because there are only eight, or eight homes and four businesses, could we request a slower speed limit than what is on there now?
That is something that is monitored not by our department, but another department, Jeff, give me a helping...
It's, it's statutory. It's, it's, it's probably a 30 mile an hour zone. There might, might be an argument that it could be suburban and a 35, but it, by statute, it should be a 30 mile an hour zone, and we would have it posted accordingly.
And it is now, thank you.
You will request extra enforcement, or if you ever...
The reason why I ask that is because even with the potholes, it's become a raceway. Last night, we had dragsters going down the street, and they made it from the south end past my house, covering both lanes. And I was talking to a neighbor again tonight, who is working right now, couldn't make it the first one on the east side, south end, and he witnessed the drag race.
That's an enforcement that we'll take up on, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, Chuck, you should call the police immediately.
I was not there to witness it.
Well, mention it to your neighbors, because that's the best way. The police can monitor, and when they're monitoring, nobody's doing anything, but once it starts happening, call right away, and I guarantee they will be there.
You know, if this is something that's happened in the past, a lot of times, if it's, if it's kids racing their cars, there's going to be a pattern to it. It's going to be a certain time or a certain night, and if you can get that information, too.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for everything. Go ahead.
I'm Dorothy Johnson, and I own the two lots on the corner. And I was very upset when I got this, that that was going to be that big an increase. Do you know what that's going to cost me? Just to have that surfacing done, it's over $2,000 that you're adding on to what was last year. I'm going to be paying about $19,000 for those, for that assessment to me, and I get $848 a month. That's what my living is, and my taxes on the property went up this year considerably. Now, how am I supposed to do, do all of this on that kind of money?
Dorothy, your total will be $18,876, is that what you got?
Yeah, that's close to $19,000.
But you can ask for deferred assistance.
Yeah, and then I'm going to pay, and I'm not doing that.
No, no, that, you can ask for...
And that, not at my, not at my age. And if I go in the nursing home, then I've got, who's going to pay that? You guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. And another thing, if you don't, try to stop those guys going through there with those big trucks with cement in them from sidewalks and stuff from downtown, because I followed them, and they're cutting through there. Why are they cutting through on that street? It's going to be the Southside Way if, if you don't do something to corral them off there. And that. And personally, I can't see the bicycle, the trail. I just can't see that, because if you look around, all of our children, part of the time is dark when those children are walking those streets home from school. I think that's a better deal to take care of than us having a trail for them. I know, the, the street needs something done to it. It absolutely does, and it has, but if you don't do it right this time, it's going to be right back to what it was before.
And I was just going to think, and Jeff can help me out, but we narrowed the width of the street, and then we added a trail, so that we saved money by narrowing the width to have the trail, so it wasn't just imposing additional cost onto that road.
But there's so many trails, why, why, as a city, are you trying to put in so many trails?
The request was for more trails on that road, but we did reduce the street size or the width on that, so there wouldn't be this cost that you're talking about, just sort of, go ahead.
Yes, a question of the engineer. Is there a weight restriction on that street, and, or will there be one after it's repaired?
There will be seasonal weight restrictions. We're going to design it for a nun, what's called a nine-ton design, so it will be able to handle a normal volume of, of commercial traffic. The, but then, on a seasonal basis, during the spring, we will put five-ton axle weight limits on, on the road.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? We'll close the public hearing here at 9:53. We're going to open it up to the council. We'll start out with a motion.
8:53?
8:53, I'm sorry, thank you for that. I'm trying to push this along. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt a resolution ordering the improvement and approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids, and I submit.
We have a motion, we have a second. I have one question for Jeff. I did notice that you, you know, for that question, I was there for time and start of this project. I seen it was a fall project. Is there any way that you can move this up from the fall? It was in here that it said it was going to be starting in September.
The... I'll have to go back and...
It says, "The project is feasible to construct, and staff is recommending that this project be led in a contract by itself for construction beginning in September and concluding in October."
We can move it up.
And I think we can move that up, as you heard.
Normally, as soon as we take bids, the contractor can usually start, so we can certainly move that up.
That's why I didn't answer the question to the person that was up at the mic, because I just want that clarified for start date.
But, Mr. Chair, let me ask, too, if I may, the engineer, if you move it up arbitrarily, without giving the contractor some leeway as to when it can be done, can that increase the cost of the bidder?
Absolutely. That's why we, we like to leave it open.
People should know.
I think that would take...
It could increase the cost. So I think, I think we maybe should let it go the way it was, rather than being definitive about moving it up, because there will be more costs then, and the people are concerned with it.
And I would argue that, because as a contractor, fall jobs are your, your highest price, and that's called the emergency time. So if you put, usually in the fall, engineers that forgot to get bids out or do this and that, that's a time when a contractor capitalizes. Your spring bidding and your spring letting, and your early bids are your lowest, lowest bids. And I was a contractor, I know that for a fact.
But is it still true, Jeff?
Yes, Jeff knows that.
Jeff's got the opposite sense.
I, I think if we can give the contractor a long enough window so that, you know, they still get it done within a specific period of time once they start, but leave it open enough so that they can fit that into their schedule, say, for instance, if they've got work to keep them going at the first part of the summer, and this fills in the second part, they, they would probably bid it, are, better, or, you know, wherever they can fit it into their schedule. If we give them that flexibility, we'll get a better price.
Public hearing's closed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, there's something, I'm not sure what you're seeing exactly there, so, because it certainly our intent to get going earlier than that.
I just showed it to Patrick.
It was a letter dated April 15th, 2015. It's included in the packet, Jeff.
So that's all, I was questioning just that.
This one's been talked about several times, so if we get the dates mixed up, we can work with that.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think that's, I think when I did that, that was a left, that was a carryover from last year's feasibility report. I tried to modify that, and that was just a, that's not what our specifications say.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Well, then, we, we got the public hearing closed, and sorry about that. We're all done, we got a motion, we got a second, we'll go with roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
That, Borkenhagen?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes. Item 9C, it's a public hearing to consider...
Do you want to let the kids out?
Yes, we can do that, we can, before we go, all...
If you need signatures for your class, just come on up right now, and any of us can sign.
We have a curfew in Brainerd for you young guys.
And the cops are waiting right outside, so I'd probably take care of it.
Anybody needs anything signed, you can still get them signed, otherwise...
They had a good hour and a half learning process.
I think they had a lot of them signed already.
They're due next.
With that, we're going to still go with 9C.
Your resolution?
9C is, is a public hearing to consider vacation of Century Court. And what I'm going to do is open up the public hearing at 8:57. Is there anybody here for the public hearing to vacate Century Court?
I...
Anybody here for vacating? Going twice, going three times? We're going to close the public hearing at 8:58, and we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the vacation request.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This will be roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Borkenhagen?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes. Item 9D, this is a, another public hearing, I'm going to open up the public hearings right after I read what it's about. It's the final reading of a proposed ordinance number 1433, and ordinance amending sections 1407.17, 2010.13 subdivision 6, and 2011.07 subdivision 3, relating to nuisance in order to correct inconsistencies in the notification method and time periods to abate nuisance. The city administrator also will recommend dispensing with the actual reading, so we're going to open up the public hearing at 8:59. Is anybody here for this public hearing? Anybody here? Going once, going twice, we're going to now close the public hearing at 9 o'clock.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I request that you ask the administrator to give a very brief discussion as to the change?
You want it after the motion?
Well, I think the public needs to know, so that's, I don't care when you do it.
Yeah.
If we can do it, I'd make a motion to dispense with the final reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
There's some variety of inconsistent language is being discussed, that changes are included in your packet. So on the first page, on ordinance number 1433, there's some strikeout language under 1407.17. We're on different pages, so I can do it together.
No, I've seen it, I was looking at it.
And then, also, under 2010-13, some strikeout adding first-class mail instead of personal mail.[1760.01] Uh, if you guys recall, a couple meetings ago, uh, City Planner Osgard walked through these with each of you, or maybe, was that the Planning Commission Dave? I know we talked about it, too. Some monit, notifications that were being just clarified, rather than personal delivery certified mail, um, saying that first-class mail is adequate. And then, um, 14 days under notice to, from the previous seven days. Those are the changes that are identified. Oh, I'm sorry. I was on the second page, where the, yes, there's 14 days for 30 under, uh, 2010, but then under 2011, that's the 14 days from the seven. So there's a variety of dates, sorry.
It could change into 14.
When asked for the summary, I didn't go into the details on each of them.
So the simplification is changing it to the 14 days after, and that makes sense.
Does that clarify everything, Mary?
I have a question for the attorney, though. When you say in your ordinance that by going with regular mail as versus certified mail, and there are times when people's mail is delivered inappropriately, or to someone else, or gets lost, or whatever, oh, what does that party do to protect themselves? And it does happen.
It can. I mean, I think best practice is we want to give either personal service or a follow-up to make sure they've received the mailing. Um, but the problem that we run into fairly regularly with certified mail is people just don't sign for it. And then we can't move on. We can't take action.
So, quick question. Most, almost everything that we send out, we don't start, start finding them right away. We send out follow-up letters, so they would have to lose a succession of letters in order to be able to say, "No, I never got anything."
Not in this one, though, would they?
Well, and two things you always have a problem is, one is checks in the mail, and then it never comes, or I never received whatever you sent me in the mail, and you'll hear those.
And can I just clarify, too, one point, another significant change here that I had, or that the city planner had, had made here, um, changing the, we have inconsistencies in here in terms of requiring the property owner to correct the nuisance within 14 days, but then giving them 30 days to request a hearing, which in effect gave them 30 days to correct the nuisance, because we couldn't do anything until that 30 days was up. And that just kind of lengthened the process, which is.
You'd have to check them twice.
A lengthy process, so we shortened that to, to be consistent with the 14-day time period.
I hate to repeat myself, but you're earning your money again tonight.
And it's still snowing, though.
Not my fault.
We have a motion, we have a second. We're going to ask for roll call again.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Borkenhagen?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes. 9E. This will be another public hearing, and I'll read it.
Hey, shouldn't we adopt 1433?
Oh, yes, we sure should. Sorry about that.
We've had the, the second reading, the final reading.
Yes.
Now we should move to adopt ordinance number 1433.
Was that a movement?
Motion?
Yep. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, and now roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Borkenhagen?
Yes.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yep.
Sheeler?
Yes. 9E. This will be another public hearing. It'll be the final reading of a proposed ordinance number 1434, and ordinance creating section 515-66 of the Brainerd zoning code related to transit food units, TFU overlay districts. And the city administrator is here to recommend dispensing with the actual reading. So we'll open up the public hearing at 9:05. Anybody here for this public hearing? We'll go once, and we're going to go twice, and three times, and this is closed. We'll close at 9:05 and a half. Now we're open for a motion.
So move to adopt.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
I mean?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Um, the way we had it set up last year was a trial basis where, um, we had certain areas where random foods were, you know, food trucks were allowed. Myself, I felt that that was sufficient. We did not really have complaints on where it was at. And to me, to expand it or to allow other areas, to me, is not something that I would like to see happen. Uh, we have businesses that pay good taxes to have the restaurants and food establishments in Brainerd. And, uh, if this allows more areas where we could have food trucks, outdoor trail, you know, and all that stuff, I'm opposed. And I hope, if anybody wants any more further clarifications, I'm open.
Chair, um, does this motion then include, the, the one area that I got hung up was a memo from Mark, um, regarding license fees. So is that?
Isn't that the next one?
That's the next one.
That's separate?
Yep.
Yeah.
This will be for the area.
Yeah, this is the overlay.
The overlay area with the maps. Anybody else have any concerns that the mayor have? Go ahead, Sue.
I'm not sure what it is that we're, we're voting on now, because, because is it the 300-foot? Is it a higher, um, buffer zone than 300, or, I mean, there's, there's suggestions for 300, 500, and 700-foot buffers.
The motion you made would be for, um, number 16. Units cannot locate within 300 feet of a restaurant or bar.
We would have to change it if we.
That serves food. And then, units cannot locate within 300 feet from the property perimeter of any festival, including the Crow Wing County Fairgrounds Sporting Events Civic Center, unless a license is issued.
And I'm, I'm opposed to the 300 feet, too, because that's only one block away from, uh, some of the locations.
Yeah, we had this the last time, I remember.
You know, the only, I, I certainly appreciate the mayor's perspective here. But one thing that, uh, came to mind for me was the concept of that food trucks aren't, you can't sit down at a food truck, you know? You basically go there, buy your food, and, and you're gone. So when that occurred to me, I started thinking a little more. I have so many people who ask me why we won't allow food trucks because of the festive, you know, and the options and things like that. A lot of people would like to see them. And I also, you know, hear your point about.
Activity?
Well, the tax base that our restaurants pay, et cetera, et cetera. But in a way, it could be looked at that there's not that much similarity. One is kind of a drive-through or to-go. You can't have the same experience with the food truck as you can with a restaurant. And if you want to order from a restaurant, you could call in and have your order ready. Stop by and pick it up, take it home. That was just a factor that.
Go ahead, Dave.
I think the other thing, too, is when you're looking at private property. I mean, you'd almost have to, like, mark out where the private property is within these zones, and it's even more restrictive. You know, I think that, that, I personally, you know, in looking at the map, I think that clarifies things a lot more. Uh, you know, I, I think that 300 feet is sufficient. I mean, if I'm going to go to the, you know, the, any of the cafes or any of the restaurants in Brainerd, it, it's a, it's a sit-down experience for the vast majority of them, if not all of them, unless you're talking about, like, McDonald's. You know, or something like that. So, and I think it's, it's also a quality of life issue, kind of like what Chip was saying, is allowing, and there's, there's mixed studies on whether they, they harm or they benefit in the first place. There's nothing that's been particularly conclusive as to the effect of food trucks in an area, so.
I had one call, um, from, from one of the businesses, and they just said that we're always trying to compare to Minneapolis, but Minneapolis in that same area would have 30,000 people, you know, basically for a population where we are sparsely populated, and that's why it's so much harder for businesses in town versus Minneapolis with the food trucks. And he said we shouldn't be looking at that, because he said, you know, we're dealing our county, you know? I mean, and so when one food truck moves in, it really, really, really hurts, so. You know, I, I shared the mayor's concern I had the last time, too, because they don't pay the taxes, and I, I'm trying to say, help the businesses in town. And, you know, we were just talking about the roads and everything else that you're trying to do in town, too, um, to bring the businesses and have the walking traffic, and this would be kind of, to me, again, a little bit of that anti-business because of the businesses that've got in town. I mean, one food truck can run around and spoil a lot of area, if he's just hitting the specials, so. But go ahead, anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I think 300 feet is maybe too far of a buffer zone. I think any, uh, you know, uh, trying to protect existing businesses by stifling competition or stifling any new innovation in our city is something that, you know, could be perceived as, as anti-business, anti-innovation, and I, and I think I'm pro-business in, by allowing food trucks anywhere.
The last, last issue that we brought up was just competition with ourselves, and the, the fact that, um, there was one restaurant who would like to see the city allow food trucks in the parks for games and, and, and other events, and, and that's not addressed in this either. And I think that fair is fair. Competition is okay, and we ought to allow competition with ourselves.
Number 20, if I may, sir?
Yep, go ahead.
Does identify that sales are permitted in the city park when approved by the city of Brainerd. So I know, I'm just saying, that was the answer that, that was talked about.
But so it's not going to be until we approve that, so that would be the second part of a motion.
And the question I think also came up, too, is was it the Park Committee or the City Council that would approve that? Because the Park Committee does the naming and runs the parks, that kind of thing, too, so.
Can I just add, add one more thing, just, you know, having been on planning and zoning? Um, you know, it, it's weird if I'm getting cast into the lot of not protecting restaurants, because the rest of planning and zoning didn't want any, you know, maybe not the whole rest of them, but that was the, the vast majority, and that was something that I definitely thought was needed in order to, to grant some protection to the businesses in Brainerd, was the 300 feet. So, you know, it's kind of a spectrum rather than a black and white situation.
Yeah. No, I appreciate at least that.
But as proposed, it says that the city will allow it if the city approves it.
I have a question. Would we have to readdress that, then, and decide who is actually going to make the decision?
Modify a motion?
Maybe rescind even, I don't know, but, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, do we?
Uh, I think we would need clarification to make sure the park or the city council had that authority, so we didn't have to run into that problem as we go forward.
Okay.
But one of them has the power.
It should be this.
That would be this.
Council, you mean?
Yeah.
Let's fix it right now.
Nice. Should we just, should we just change?
Yeah.
Number 20. How, how are we going to word number 20?
Let's change the wording to.
Are permitted in a city park.
Because they still have to get a license.
How about, how about when, when approved, well, you know, when approved by the council? Is that what you want?
When approved by this vote?
I would just say sales are permitted in city parks.
If I may, Mr. President, we are observing the parks authority, though, because they do have abilities and, what you say, responsibilities within their own parks that they do on their own and not necessarily had to direct into the city. And correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I do believe that the parks does have.
Authority.
Authority.
I think it should be Parks and Rec.
Mr. Chairman, I think this should be the city council for this reason. I believe the park board would have a. They are not going to likely want to have a food wagon there if they have concessions. To vote that way, then, is, is a con, they benefit from not having. And even though we might like that, we're going to do this, we got to be fair to it. I think the woman who sent us that email, she was right on it. I mean, we were saying it's okay to have all this competition for us, but oh, no, not you. So I think we should absolutely allow them, but the council should approve the permit.
Can I play devil's advocate, because I'm not really sure how I, you know, I've been mulling this over. You know, one of the problems is by allowing competition to go against the parks, it's the money that they generate that actually funds a lot of the activities that are, people are coming to in the first place. You know, you might be choking it off at the source if that were to have that kind of an adverse effect on what they're making from their concessions.
But you could see somebody.
I can see, you know, the idea makes.
Front Street Cafe looking at it.
Right, I can understand what they're saying competition-wise, but it's, it's, it's slightly different. There's a nuanced difference in there.
No, we're protecting ourselves if we don't allow it, just like.
Well, if we stop parks, then you're, you're, you're stopping a lot of the programming that, or that you're causing an increase in price to allow the same programming.
Go ahead, Dave.
But anecdotally, on that, how we're taking away some of their concession revenue. On the flip side, I am invited to all of my nephew's baseball games in all of the Brainerd parks. I go to a lot of them, but if there were food trucks there, I may go to all of them for dinner. Who knows? You, you can't say that it's going to hurt concessions when it may draw more people.
You know, the other thing, too, to look at would be what's being served at the concession, and what's the food truck. You could very well go in and, you know, and I can't say that I frequent the concession stands at Parks and Rec, so I'm not speaking from, you know.
Okay, Chip, go ahead.
Just a, a real quick, um, thought here of the 4th of July, for example, when, um, the city council, or the, um, community action, uh, people pay to serve food at the city park then. So if there were food trucks all around that were parked for free, there's.
The buffer zone would apply to their entire permitted area, like the county fair.
So I, I want to help with this motion. The motion will be that we're going to strike when approved by city of Brainerd.
We have a motion, and it is to adopt as it is in front of us.
Yes. Mary Coe has made that motion on the second advance.
And we were just discussing whether we were going to amend or change.
Mr. Evans mentioned, solve it now.
I would.
I, I would.
The language that's been proposed is to, that sales are permitted in city parks.
So is this motion going to amend to strike that or not?
Would you change your motion, Mary, to have it, to say sales are allowed in city parks? I change my second?
Okay, now we have a motion, we have a second, and we have that sales, I mean, well, item number 20 will be changed to sales are permitted in city parks. With that, any further discussion? Otherwise, um, we're going to go with, we're going to go with roll call? Go with roll call, see if you got it.
Evans?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Borkenhagen?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
I'm going to go no.
It was five to two to.
Yep. Um, with that, we're going to move on to.
Mr. President, was that maybe that there's some clarification needed? Was that just for the second reading, or was that for adoption of the ordinance?
Nope, we still got to adopt it.
Okay.
Oh, that should have been.
He wanted to see where was that, that was the call.
We need, um, another motion to adopt.
So move.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Evans?
Nope.
Johnson?
Yes.
Borkenhagen?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Nope. 9F, public hearing, final, I did that for you, Mayor. Public hearing. This will be another public hearing. It's the final reading of a proposed ordinance number 1435, and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city dated September 2011 as identified in section 515 of the Brainerd City Code to add TFU overlay district. And the city administrator is here to recommend dispensing with the actual reading, so we're going to open up the public hearing at 9:19. Anybody here for this public hearing? About once, or going twice, or going three times? We're going to close the public hearing at 9:19 and a half. Looking for a motion. Looking for a motion, the motion, recommendation.
I moved to, it was the final reading.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now we can start with discussion. No further discussion?
Which one are we on?
We're on 9F, and we're on now the fees.
The, the ordinance that is identified in the top page is number 1435. Last one was 1434. So this is an, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city dated September 11th as identified in section 15, 515 of the Brainerd City Code. It is right before item 9G. Right.
Right there. My packet says 9G and then 9H.
So the last one we voted on created the overlay districts, this one is amending the official zoning code.
Oh, there we go. So it's not the fee yet?
No, it's just to add the language.
He's got 9E and F, it's the same...
That's what it is, all right. I thought I heard fee, so I was going, wait a minute, that's after...
So this would be, um...
We all, everywhere, everyone on the same page?
Mark Ostergaard was holding here, hold the public hearing to amend zoning ordinance to add section to permit transit unit, and he threw it under 9E and F here, so I don't know which direction he is going on that.
Well, the first one was ordinance number 4, identified at the top of the pages, 1434. The one you just made a motion on was 1435.
Okay, and that one will be...
It adds the TFU overlay districts.
Yep.
That's what it...
What is the difference between the two?
Well, the one, if you go back to 1434...
Yep, he's got a map here, but it doesn't say which one is which. Oh, I think, we don't have Mark here, that's why the confusion.
So 1434 talks about section 66, 515-66, and it talks about what is in the transient food unit overlay districts, and it goes through sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and starts laying out your different processes, the 300 foot. When we get to 1435, what you're actually adopting is three sections, it talks about amending the ordinance to add the following transient food unit overlay districts, 1 through 8, and then all provisions of the official zoning map shall remain in full force, so we're clarifying that what else is there is still in place, but we're adding these eight overlay districts.
West Brainerd, County Government Center, Downtown, Northern Pacific Center, intersection of Highway 18 and 25, Brainerd and Destra Park, Central Lakes College and Franklin Arts Center parking lot, we're adding this to what we already...
Yeah, the other one kind of said what a transient food unit is, how it operates, what it can do, and this is just basically setting, here are the areas that we referenced in the earlier one.
And, go ahead, Mary.
Just a question, it seemed to me that we got correspondence from Central Lakes College that they did not want to allow that. One please?
Mr. Chair, can I say something about this? Yeah, I got the same correspondence, I emailed Mark and recommended that we allow it in our city ordinance, but Minskew can handle their own private property with their own food vendors how they see fit.
Because it is private property, they'd need permission to be able to go under.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, that motion carries, now we're looking for a...
Move to approve ordinance 1435?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Beavens?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Hilgar?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yep.
Sheeler?
Yes. A motion carries. We're going to move to 9G, we have another public hearing. The final reading of a proposed ordinance number 1436, an ordinance amending the Brainerd zoning code section 515-61-6, 515-62-6, 515-63-6, 515-65-6, and 515-70-5 regarding non enclosed areas for dining and/or serving alcohol. City administrator is recommending dispensing with the actual reading, we'll open up the public hearing at 9:25. Anybody here for this public hearing? We'll go once, we'll go twice, we'll go three times, the public hearing now will close at 9:25 and a half, we're looking for a motion.
A move.
We have a motion, and a second, any discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries, now we'll look for the roll call vote of adoption.
Move, we adopt the ordinance and the subsequent sections?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion, otherwise we'll go with roll call.
Beavens?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Hilgar?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes. 9H, first reading, this is the proposed ordinance number 1437, an ordinance amending Brainerd City Code section 1010-01 regarding licensed fees for transit food units, and this one here will be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to hold the first reading of proposed ordinance number 1437.
And a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? I have a question, Mr. Chair, and with Mr. Ostergaard here, maybe we can't answer this, but it doesn't, it's not necessary to answer tonight, but remember we had those, the kids riding bikes selling ice cream? Are those food carts? So would that be 200 bucks a pop?
Wouldn't that be under cart vendor? The question that he asks, here to cart vendor operate for three months with a fee, that would be...
I would think so.
$50 for three months?
That and the hot dog guy that showed up.
All right, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
I think that's how I read it.
We can ask Mark to prepare for an answer for that.
Yep.
Another question with these fees, would they apply to say I hold a festival downtown Brainerd and I get a food vendor to come into my event, do they also need to be permitted in this, by the city to come to this one day concert I have?
Like arts in the park.
Yeah.
There's 15 of them in the...
Right, it might be the only day they're in Brainerd.
Right.
But isn't that covered though in a couple motions back with the festival and special activities?
Yeah, that's my question, is it?
That I don't know.
We will have that question prepared.
See, I would read this as you need to be licensed, period. Yes, absolutely. And the other question I have is if you're going to just, you know, allow six months and cut this fee in half, but allow, but allow them to take the best six months, you know, you're not, I mean, to me, I would make it $300 for those good six months instead of just half the fee.
I think the fee structure needs more consideration.
The chips are 400, it's not 30.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't think the fee should be prorated either. Taxes aren't prorated, the people who have the Brixton mortar building, if they decide to close and go south for a couple of months, they don't get their taxes reduced. I do not think it should be prorated, I think it should be a set fee, whether it's 400 and 200 or 500 and 300, I don't know, is 400 the maximum we can go, in your opinion, and stand up to a potential challenge?
And I agree with that a little bit, because then we have to do some policing here, of, you know, somebody just paid a 200 fee and say I'm going to operate, but then could expand outside of that and you would have to police it.
I think it should be one fee.
Well, it would be under license, I mean, if anybody checked them, they would have the taste under, I think that would be something easy, but yeah, I see what you're saying.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And how about the argument that Gabe put forth, how about a one day license?
Yes.
Or a one event license? I think this needs relooking, the whole thing, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
Make a motion to hold this over, or to be tabled, or...
I don't know.
No, we're not going to table a motion, we're just going to send it back to staff for further review. Too many questions.
No first reading?
Yep.
Okay. 9I, the mayor.
Oh, which one do I get?
You get this, you are so good at selling this.
Oh, thank you. For our listening audience that are still awake, we do have some looking for applicants. One is for Cable TV Advisory Committee, we have two terms to expire in the year 2016 and 2017, we have two terms for the Charter Commission to expire on 2018, EDA, one term to expire in 2020, and we do have a Rental Dwelling Board of Appeals, one tenant, one general public representative, terms to expire 2016, and listening agenda for tonight, I think we're going to have two openings for the HRA that'll be forthcoming, and so if anybody has an interest in those, we'd certainly love to hear from you. So, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We're going to move to item number 10, the Planning Commission, and let Dave handle this, you don't have Mark, so go ahead.
So you'll have to bear with me, all right? I will muddle through this. So the first is a conditional use permit that is applied for by ISD 181 to permit classroom and office additions, so do you want me to kind of go through the stuff first or do we go in a motion first?
Get a motion.
And I move to approve.
Second.
All right, I will kind of run through this, and then, you know, if I miss anything, or we might have some questions from Swollet, who's here from the school district, but basically it's a CUP for an addition, they're looking at seven additional classrooms on the north side that would accommodate up to 156 students, but that would be maximum capacity, right now they're looking at maybe 100 students, it depends on the growth in the district and in that area. On the west side, there would be office space, so when you're looking at it, R3 permits, the schools permitted by CUP, you've got business zoning except for some of the multifamily dwellings to the west, I think their maps included in here, I know with planning and zoning, we had maps from the district, so, you know, if you look at it, one of the issues is they want it ready for occupancy coming up in fall, so, you know, the urgency is there time wise. The north side meets all the setbacks, the west side, they'll need the variance for the side yard, there's some questions about impervious areas over 50%, but they already have grading and erosion plan, it's been pretty much approved, they're more than 300 feet from the Mississippi, that's, the 300 feet was the line where you needed some more verbiage, I suppose, you could say, and some more precautions, but they're past that. When you look at the additional, the additional will match the height and appearance of the surrounding neighborhood, if you look at page 5 in the CUP process, there are a list of conditions, and basically all the issues with the additions proposed by the district would meet all those standards, there'd be no conflicts in any of those, there was some question about the drop off and pickup, that's already been improved over what it has been, there will be an increase in that, but, you know, have met with the district to come up with ideas to speed up some of the process, so that's in line, and I won't go into any of that, there were a couple specifics thrown out, but nothing's been codified or agreed upon, and, have I missed anything?
I think you've done wonderful, and I want to thank you for that, and I want to also thank the school district for adding on and continuing building in Brainerd instead of looking elsewhere, we'll take all the additions you want. With that, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, that motion carries, we'll go to 10B, the variance, go ahead and turn out the motion and...
Okay, we have a variance by ISD 1, the same thing, to permit the same issue, and I move we approve the variance?
Second.
All right, so basically, there shouldn't be any, looking at the conditions from the variance, there shouldn't be any adverse effects to the neighborhood or the surrounding, it will not alter the characteristics, we had two people speak, you know, and neither of them were opposed to the variance whatsoever, pretty much the only thing that came up was asking for a crossing sign, which I'd already talked to Jeff about at one of those. One of the issues that came up is, you know, there will be a berm and there will be planting to screen the noise from the traffic coming into the school, and that was about the only other issue that was brought up.
What were the conditions that he's talking about, just quickly?
Are you looking at the setback conditions?
Well, he just said approve the variance with conditions, and then he says Planning Commission recommends approval without the conditions, and I'm just trying to figure...
Oh boy, I'm trying to remember, I would have been a little bit more prepared, but I've been...
Okay, no, that's okay, you know, I'm sure that you guys hashed it out. We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, that motion carries, thank you so much, and sorry about taking you way to the end here. Yes, 11 is public forum, this is time allocated for citizens to bring matters, not on the agenda to the attention of council, time limits may be imposed, I usually hold around five minutes, if you need extra time, please let us know at the time. So the public forum is now open, and it's, we'll go once, or twice, or three times, we're going to close the public forum, and we're going to move right on to item number 12, staff reports, any staff reports?
I have a couple, sir.
Go ahead.
I'll take the easy one first, we have an IT committee coming up, committee meeting coming up, I think it's the 4th or 6th of May, we're going to send out a notice, and with, we did not, it's an ad hoc committee, wondering if you would like to appoint Sue Hilgar to replace the previous council member that was on that committee? Mary is also on the committee.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I did, I just didn't want to put myself on the committee with...
Well, you can jump on.
You can't hold a member for a while.
You go, girl.
I thought other members might be more interested in...
Do you need a motion, or can the, you can just appoint her, can't you?
Yes.
I think you can.
Yep, we got her appointed, thank you so much, Sue, for participating.
You betcha.
The other item I have for council and staff is an update on the interim fire chief, we do have a copy of the memo for our newspaper reporter. There's more?
There you go.
Looking for a motion?
Was this, oh, just another one of the same, or is this...
Yes.
Gabe gets two.
Let's walk through it, so with the, we did a little bit of history here, reminding everyone with the retirement, state law and the civil service process, they have absolute authority, we met with Mr. Lowmiller under number one, so we were authorized hiring Mr. Lowmiller for the interim, we're asking for council authorization effective April 20th today, for the temporary hiring due to state law, he has a maximum 30 days until we hire an interim. You would like to make a motion on that, sir?
I'll still move.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just what, and I'm sorry, I just, being that we just got this...
Is the money outlined in here somewhere?
It is identified in there, we authorized, or we were authorized to negotiate was $25, maybe I didn't even include that.
It was $25 an hour.
He took us to the limit on it.
Oh, it is on page one, item 2B, and we talked about Kevin's current salary being at 40, and the firefighters are at somewhere around $21, so this was above them, it'll be for three to four hours a week, it won't, I'm sorry, did I, every time, three to four hours a day, and we were very clear too, that when he responds to a fire, if it's nights, weekends, or whatever, we have to pay him for that time too, and so as we go through this process, you'll see that in our overall timeline, we talked about, we won't have someone hired until July or their first day, we're hoping to get council fully advised as to the cost expense of having an interim and not having a chief for a while, and then what the new salary for the new chief is, that'll be determined by council ultimately too, so...
Does he fall under just like the same benefits and everything else than his rest of employees?
Because it's interim and it's temporary, no, so he won't have any benefits other than if he reaches certain requirements for PRA, or, but the way we've designed it, you don't receive health insurance benefits until 32 hours, so this position won't receive health insurance. That is the primary one, I think you were talking about.
Yep. Well, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a puzzled look, and Chip.
For you!
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries, sorry about that, Chip.
And the rest of the items are that we're identifying that the commission met on Friday, April 10th, and took the following actions, and so council's confirming that, and we wanted to make council aware that we did have the attached agreement in there, and so I think we're good then, we don't need any additional actions from council, but we do identify the timelines, and we should be able to meet all those that we identified a week or two ago, can't remember the date, two. I don't have anything else, unless you have questions to me.
With that one, we got Connie.
We will be having the administrative specialist come back to city council meetings beginning the first week in May, we tried to, trying to save some costs, and now we'll have her come back to the evening meetings to take notes, or take the minutes.
Oh, that saves money.
It's not going to save us money.
But it's going to be more accurate.
No, it's going to be less time of the administrators, because that's what was added responsibility for Connie and I.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it.
What will it cost?
That depends on how long the meetings go, we'll estimate two hours for a council meeting, so we'll either have her come in two hours late, or have her leave two hours early, so if the council meetings go longer than two hours, we will have to pay her a time and a half or anything extra.
Do we have to pay her overtime? Do we have to pay her overtime for evening work?
The contract has some specifications for this position, and that's why we are allowed some flexi, flexibility, but it's about judging how much time that is, the answer is a basic yes, but we, we are working on reducing that.
So, so we, will we be billing individual council members for the length of, you know, how much they talk?
You know, and, and the, the employees have the option of getting paid overtime or taking comm time. Historically, they've taken comm time, but we cannot make them take comm time, so we may have to pay overtime.
But that is still at the hour and a half rate?
Exactly.
Okay.
I, I'm still on, if I may, Mr. Chair? We tape these, and the tape I presume is given to Nikki?
It's available for staff, yes.
And does not Nikki transcribe it now?
No, uh, the city administrator and county work together, we work, and we provide a summary of the actions, all the notes I take at each meetings, and then I give that to her, she then takes the notes and types them up based upon the conversation.
The hiccup you have with, uh, you know, going off the tape is, when you, everybody jumps in and starts talking one time, there's just nothing but mumble to them, so that's why you sometimes, you know, we're trying to get clearly one person to take, case we ever had to do a verbatim, but it's very, very tough for her to take that tape, and everybody speaks one time. It's, you can't pick up nothing, so the accuracy would actually be further away than if she would show up. And I agree that she should be here, I mean, I'm fully, and I think you're perfect with, you know, giving her the time, but if she took the tape and started playing back and forth and did the minutes, it would take her a half a day of time at work.
Right. So. So it, it's a transparency issue.
Yeah, but it also, I think it'll save money, because you hit her notes, get there, and it'll be accurate and quick and fast, I think.
Worth a shot.
Yeah.
We're going back to what was in place for all those years, we tried implementing, but with me leaving, that's going away.
Yeah, and there's times he's doing both here, and we need his attention on the council, and he's trying to take.
The new guy's attention.
Yes.
Well, it might be a question to ask candidates when we interview, what their thoughts are on that. Cause you know, I'm not interested in the spin.
Well, no, but that's just part of the, item number thirteen, if we're all done with that, council president, mayor, and council other committee reports, we'll start out with other committee reports, go ahead, Mayor?
If I could, I've got about three items, and that's more normal, but one of the things is I'm on the Arboretum Board, and, uh, they are having their night annual fine wine and craft beer sampling event this Friday night from six to eight o'clock, there's a fee involved, uh, but they're gonna celebrate Arbor Day at the Northland Arboretum, and you can enjoy fine wine, craft beer sampling paired, paired with different foods at the arboretum, and it's a fundraiser, wanted to make a fundraiser, so, um.
You're gonna drive home after that? You're gonna drive home after that?
If I, if I drink, I would have someone else drive me home.
Mr. Mayor, is there a price for the tickets on that?
Yes, there is, thirty-five dollars.
We should talk Baxter and the building bike tracks.
Any more of this apart?
Anyway, that's, that's information, I've got one more piece of information, uh, Andy Stone and I met with two representatives from Jefferson Bus Lines, and they come into this area, and I think you can see the different buses, they really cover this area, their rates are very reasonable, and I'm not gonna quote them, that you can go like from here up north for about fifteen bucks, I mean, they, and, so if anybody's interested, and one of the things that they did, they didn't have it when we met with them a couple weeks ago, but they, there is a banner now on one of the city buses that shows Jefferson Lines, and so if you have anybody interested, you could always get ahold of Andy Stone, cause he's got a neat map down there of all of the routes, and they do come in, and they used to merge all four buses coming in at one time, but the problem was of having a facility that could handle that many people at restrooms, as well as eating, but I mean, the main thing was the restrooms, and so they're still trying to do something with that, so now there are two buses that come in at the same time, and you probably come and see east, west, north, and south, but anyway, I think it's really neat. Uh, they're something like our bus lines, where they are subsidized somewhat by the state, but they, uh, I think it's neat that they put their nice banner across one of our city buses, and I think one for sure. My last time, if I may, Mr. President, um, and I think everybody got a copy of this, and it's, uh, I'd like to add the following license application to the April twentieth city council agenda for approval contingent upon successful completion of background check and city inspections, and that is for applications for licenses sell tobacco, tobacco products, or tobacco related devices. Uh, for, uh, Mr. Jacob T. Moser, uh, the address is, his address is fifty twenty-nine Brentwood Road, Baxter. Business, uh, name of business is Electric Papers, and the business address is at seven eleven Laurel, Laurel Street, Brainerd, Minnesota, and, uh, I would ask for a motion to allow that based on completion of background check and city inspection.
We're looking for a motion.
Move to approve, second.
We got a motion, we have a second, any further discussion, and we wanna thank the mayor for bringing this forward, and.
Yeah, I was on the phone with him several times today, so, and I think everybody else for the help on it.
We have a vote?
Get a vote.
Yep, we made a vote then.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carries, thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and I'm gonna cut mine real quick tonight, um, the dam, there was nothing on it, I won't hear anything.
No water on it anymore?
No, as far as any discussion, we haven't had anything, I haven't heard anything.
I'm not gonna give it.
And then the other thing I wanna quickly talk about, I forgot to tell you, on nine C, where we had the public hearing to consider vacating the century court, I talked to Kevin Close today, he said that's still moving forward, you know, and, um, and I forgot to mention that back there, but that industrial park, you know, business is still moving forward, they got it in their A-zone, which means it's moving forward very well, so just let everybody know on that. And then, to go with, also, one other thing I wanna mention is about our meetings with Baxter, Connie, the mayor, and I, and Patrick are, just met with Baxter, we sat down, gave him what exactly the language, and at that, they're gonna take that language back to their council and see what they can do, so we're still working on it. We're lost. Uh, what we're trying to get is the eight million plus the fees and the interest.
The money upfront for the sewer, rather than waiting to collect.
Yes, and, um, currently we've got some fees going on right now with engineering fees of about seventy-five thousand dollars a month.
Right.
So we wanna get this taken care of, and I think what we proposed, if anyone wants to check it out, can just check with Patrick, he can update you on the meetings, but we're waiting for Baxter to respond on the, you know, the next meeting to get it resolved.
What will happen if they don't respond as you want?
Well, we'll wait until that happens, I think they're gonna be good about it. So, with that, I'd like to move to item number fourteen, we got adjourned to a closed session to discuss Tom's tobacco payment and the city administrator interviews to be held on May first, two thousand fifteen, and May seventh, two thousand fifteen. Need a motion?